Good morning all and welcome here this morning. And could I welcome Arwel Roberts instead of Delith today? Thank you, welcome. Welcome to this special meeting of the Community Scrutiny Committee being held on Thursday, the 11th of January 2024. This meeting is being webcast with the exception of any business that the committee resolves to exclude the press and public because of the likely disclosure of exempt information as defined by the Local Government Act 1972. This meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with Community Scrutiny Committee members attending in person at the council chamber, county hall, Rithin, or remotely via video conference. For transparency purposes, I will identify which Community Scrutiny Committee members are in attendance and whether they are attending in person or remotely. Here in the chamber, we've got the chair, councillor Williams, the vice chair, councillor Karen Edwards, councillor Rowland James, councillor James Elson, councillor John Harland, councillor Arwel Roberts, councillor Mervyn Parry and councillor Brian Jones. Attending remotely, we, as members of the committee, we have councillor Michelle Blakely-Walker and councillor Cheryl Williams. Also, there are other members of the council present, lead members, and also people who have called this decision in along with officers. Those attending remotely are kindly asked to mute their microphones unless they are called upon to speak. Community scrutiny committee members are also asked to have their videos switched on throughout the meeting unless the chair specifically requests you to turn your video off to improve the quality of the audio link when you are speaking. You will be expected to restart your video once you have finished speaking. Please also refrain from using the chat facility as messages sent to all are visible on the webcast. Those present in the chamber are asked to make sure that they speak directly into the microphone to improve the quality of the sound for those attending remotely. To aid transparency, all the meeting's business must be conducted through the chair. Thank you, Rhian.
Any apologies?
No, no apologies.
Hugh Erving's give his apologies because he's going to have to go early before he sums up at the end because he's the signature. And James has got to leave early to a prior appointment, so thank you. Declarations of interest, are you going to do that?
Thank you, Chair. Members will be aware of the requirement under the council's code of conduct to declare any personal or prejudicial interest in respect of any business to be considered at today's meeting. Such interests should be declared now or soon as the councillor affected becomes aware that they have a personal or prejudicial interest in today's business. All members declaring an interest are required to state clearly what the interest is and to advise whether it is a personal interest or a personal and prejudicial interest as defined in the code of conduct. Any member declaring a prejudicial interest is required to leave the meeting for the duration of the business and can take no part in the proceedings. Members with a personal interest only may take part in the debate and any vote. If a personal or personal and prejudicial interest is declared today that has not previously been disclosed and recorded, the councillor concerned will be required to complete and sign the declaration of interest form, which is either available from the committee's support staff in attendance here today or online.
Do we have any declarations of interest? Yes, Hugh Erving.
No, because it's not an interest that affects you more than the general public.
Brian Jones, please.
Do any of the committee members on the call-in need to declare the interest or does it take Miss Red?
Being a signatory to a call-in isn't an interest because it's part of your role as scrutiny members, so no.
All happy, everybody happy, yeah? Urgent matters agreed by the chair, there are no urgent matters agreed, so we'll move on to agenda item four, the review of the cabinet decision related to the library's one-stop-shop and shop-saving proposal, which is found on page five to 130. We have Emrys Wynn as the lead member, we have Gwyneth as finance, I welcome you both here today, and Emrys is going to introduce it. Then, we're going to go over to Hugh Erving for the reason as the main signature, and then we're going to have... Sorry, okay. Sorry, Rhian, I've just been told Rhian's going to introduce the paper and Emrys is going to be there for support. Then we're going to go over to Hugh Erving, Terry, James, Justin and Brian for their reasons for the calling as well, please, thank you. Rhian.
Thank you. The report before you, I'm sure you've read it all, but the report before you outlines the process of calling the decision taken by cabinet in, in order to scrutinise it. As appendices, appendices to reports, we have the request to call it in, that's appendix A, and appendix B, the reports that went to cabinet in December. The report before you today notes the reasons why the decision was called in. There are five of them, that the decision of reducing the hours from 40% is inappropriate because the reductions will prevent a service that performs well and to keep it standard, and it will affect performance indicators, key performance. This hasn't been explained. One-call shops have been located in libraries provide support to the community, especially less able residents who can't get as much support. The public's admission to IT will be reduced and there will be opportunities for people to have access to warm place and social will be reduced. The reduce of losing staff who have been trained, haven't been counted yet and are included in the figures for corporate reductions, and the full information hasn't been reported to members yet. Town councils, Fritthan and St Asaf, they haven't said that they will be supporting the financial support. These figures need to be known and be considered before the decisions, final decisions can be made. Financial, people have been, said that they've been, sorry, this could have an effect on the community welfare. The financial losses such as bank... I'm sorry, I can't find where Rhian is. Following, considering these reasons today and the reasons of the cabinet, in light of these reasons that have been put forward, there will be an opportunity for you to discuss this after the signatures have presented their case, and then the cabinet members and officers will respond to those points. You will then discuss, it will then be up to the chair whether he allows external people to this committee to ask questions, and then at the end of that, there will be an opportunity for both sides to summarise the comments before the decision come, the committee comes to a decision. You can decide either that there's no need to review the decision made by the cabinet or you can decide to ask the cabinet to review it, but if you do that, you need to give completely clear reasons on the basis and new recommendations. And you can, if you may, decide maybe that there's no need to re-look at the decision, but maybe you'd like to still provide comments for the cabinet for the future. That's the process we'll be following. Emrys, do you want to say a word before we move on? Oh, no. Sorry, Hugh first.
Bonjour, good morning, everybody. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to outline our concerns and proposals regarding the reduction in library hours and one-stop-shop services by some 40%. But if you'd just allow me to ask a question before I outline my reasons. When these proposals were being worked up, did anyone actually visit library premises and witness the active activities taking place there? Because yesterday, or Tuesday I should say, let me outline what I found in Prastatin Library. I'd course to call there to visit the bank facilities available to the public on that day. What did I find? Busy premises, a queue for the lady from the bank, warm, it was warm in there, there were newspapers, so I took my place in the queue, sat down, read the paper for a few minutes, and realised in the corner of the library, there was a group of youngsters singing and whatever, and I thought, what a lovely atmosphere in here. We should really be proud of this small, efficient, high-performing service, and instead of treating it as a soft target on which service cuts originally of 50% can be imposed, and then when as a result of a massive consultation response, think it is acceptable to reduce this to 40%. Public feedback that I've received seems to indicate a demoralised staff, thinking that after years of loyal service, they're undervalued and not wanted. Practically, a 40% cut in an officer's salary does not equal a living wage, leaving those individuals no option but to take any redundancy package on offer and hope to find alternative work elsewhere. I wonder if this is a good way to treat staff and earn respect from those that remain? And I wonder if we opposed cuts of this magnitude, 40%, on any other of our services? I realise that nine cabinet members agreed these proposals. Many will suggest that there's a strong body of opinion in this council that profoundly disagrees with this, and approximately 4,750 members of the public have actually taken the trouble to respond to the consultation and object. And this morning, I've been handed a detailed paper by the Unionson representative outlining a very strong objection and positive suggestions to the proposal. So to summarise my proposals as quickly as I can, firstly, they reduce the library hours by 40%, which I submit could affect the council's key performance indicators. One-stop shops are located in the libraries are key to providing support for residents, particularly the less able. Public access and assistance with IT technology will be reduced, and opportunities for the public to enter a warm, comfortable environment for social reasons will be significantly reduced, and in the cold weather last week, didn't we need it? The potential redundancy costs and the impact of losing fully trained and experienced staff are not yet available, nor as I'm aware, included in figures for corporate savings. Four, the town and city councils of Rutland and St Asaf make substantial financial contributions to their libraries. Whether they will continue to do so in the light of the proposed service cuts is not yet known, and we need to know these figures and consider them before decisions are made. And five, outside organisations provide services through the libraries, as I experienced on Tuesday. We do not yet know if they will continue to do so, and if they don't, we need to know the impact both on the library finances and more importantly, local communities. There's income from banks and other organisations for using library facilities, reductions in this have not yet been calculated. Can I also add that just yesterday, I was contacted by a prominent heritage organisation who have received a substantial grant from public funds to work up a heritage project on seaside holidays. As far as Prastatin is concerned, this is well underway, and it intended, I quote, "to evoke Prastatin in its Edwardian glory". This was intended to be located in Prastatin Library, but this suggestion is now under threat, as are their future plans for other centres in the county. This is just but one example of how libraries work to enhance local communities, and do we really want members to throw such opportunities away? I've put our case to the committee this morning, I hope other members will support us. I would hope today that the committee will send these proposals back to cabinet for a pause and detailed reconsideration of the proposals. The financial case is not fully made yet, costs particularly redundancies are not thoroughly quantified, impact on the community is not yet fully appreciated, particularly to organisations such as dementia groups and support organisations. The amount of money concerned is manageable compared to the cost of other services. Surely there's a will to seek these savings elsewhere and preserve the important service. A public consultation has been completely ignored. Now, I will leave it now to other members to outline their support, but I do invite the committee to reject these proposals and request cabinet members think again. I must say, Chairman, thank you for mentioning it. I do have a hospital appointment this morning, I do have to leave, I've tried to rearrange it, so it's a somewhat stressful morning for me, but thank you for listening to me, and I hope you will listen to the rest of the representations this morning.
Thank you, Hugh. Thank you very much, Chair. Can I call on Terry Mendes, please, to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My comments relate to item three of the call-in documents, and this is all about saving money. I mean, it's an admirable, it's an admirable proposition if it works, but it doesn't. We've heard that libraries are essential, or we will hear from other members that the libraries are essential, that are essential for the young to do the homework, that are essential for the underprivileged, the elderly to keep warm and to pay the bills, that are essential for the community as a one-stop-shop. We've heard, we have heard all that. I could go on. So, Mr. Chair, let's talk about money, let's talk about savings. Where are these savings? Where are the savings of 330,000? Where are they coming from? Now, in the cabinet meeting in December, yeah, in the cabinet meeting in December, Liz Grieve was asked, how many people would be made redundant, or as it's termed, voluntary exit scheme? The answer, Mr. Chairman, was none, not one, nobody. They're going to be reassigned to other duties. So where are the savings? They will still receive their pay, they'll still receive the generous pension contributions of between 6 and 12%. So where are the savings? If we're paying staff for closing the libraries, where are the savings? Is it the utilities? That's the only thing, the cleaning, the power, the heating, whatever. So, if we're going to save, or the cabinet proposed to save 330,000 just by closing them and saving on the utilities, does that mean the council is paying 660,000 for the power? They need to look at their contracts, I would think. Mr. Chairman, let me take you to page 18 of the, of the report. And just in that savings, 22, 23, 24 figures. And the two, top two boxes, frontline posts and management and supervision or supervisor reductions, they add up to just short of 280,000. Now, I presume, and I'm sure Gwyneth or Miss Grieve will, will explain, that is staff costs. But we've already said, we've already ascertained that nobody is going to be made redundant, they'll be moved to other areas, so they're still going to be paid by the council. Now, they may not be paid from Miss Grieve's budget, so the savings will look good on hair books, but they're going to, the payment and the staffing costs will come from another area. So, to me, that's just a form of creative accounting. It just doesn't make sense. If DCC's, if DCC's funds, if we create, if we look at it at one big pond, we're just robbing Peter to pay Paul, or we're shifting costs from one area to the other. Now, Hugh mentioned this survey, and it was the largest response ever, as I understand it. 4,600, there are other figures being bandied about. And in the cabinet meeting in December, two of my fellow councillors spoke passionately, Hugh Hilditch-Williams and particularly Bob Biffeney, she spoke very passionately about this 4,600 people, responses with 95% against closing these libraries. That's 4,370, if anybody wants to do the maths. So 4,370 people are against the closures of these libraries, and their opinion has been overridden by nine cabinet members. So 4,300 people, 4,370 people have been disregarded by nine people who are, should be answerable to the voter. Okay, finally, this matter should go back to cabinet because the figures simply don't add up, simply don't add up. The savings are not there, but there are other projects that DCC are doing that can be mothballed to facilitate greater savings, and I'm not going to go into them now. Some of you around this table know what I'm advocating, but I won't go into it now. And 330,000 pounds, in the scheme of the things, of 6 million this year and 26 million next year, really is a drop in the ocean. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Terry. And next is Jay Melston.
Right, Chair, I will be brief. Right, so when Hugh asked me to be a signatory to this call-in, I was more than happy because I believe, like Hugh's already mentioned, that libraries have become a bit of a soft target. We've heard about the high level engagements on this, and I'd be interested to know what that would be if you asked the whole of the county. I think, you know, the people, 95% of the people engaged were against it, and I believe it probably could be greater across the whole of the county. I think it is vastly unpopular. I believe it's a core service, it's obviously very vital to the young and the old, as we've already heard, and we'll hear some more, I think, from my colleagues. I believe it's a duty of elected members to defend this service, which is why we're here today. The pressures, we know that are on the, on the budget within the council are great, and it equates to about 10% across the board. We've heard that this is representing a 22% cut in libraries budget and a 40% cut consequently in the delivered service, which is unfair and disproportionate. I feel that if these services are cut, they may never be reversed. I believe it is a one-way street for the libraries, down which we should not turn. I believe that this proposal should be sent back to cabinet and put on the spike of bad ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, James. And Justin Evans, do you want to come forward?
Hi, yes, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm not going to go over all the points that have already been raised, although, you know, I fully support everything that's already been said by my colleagues today. But as a councillor in Rill, where we all know deprivation levels are high, one of my primary concerns regarding these changes is the impact it will have on our more vulnerable children and young people. Sadly, there are a great many children out there who don't have a warm, quiet space to study. There are many with disruptive home lives and libraries, and then library provide them with a sanctuary, a place to get away from all that is going on at home, a place where they can study in peace. Every child deserves to have the same opportunities regardless of their background, and I believe Derbyshire County Council will be denying our young people this if they push ahead with these reduced opening hours. Like I say, I fully support everything that Hugh said and Terry and James, and I feel that this decision needs to go back to the cabinet for them to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Justine. And next is Brian Jones. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Not a lot to say on it really, because most of it's already been said by my fellow colleagues, and councillor Anne Davies is yet to speak, so I fully support it, we've been through it in private, we understand the pressures on the council as a whole, but this particular saving shouldn't, shouldn't be on the table, and I'll have the benefit of summing up at the end, so I can expand on that then. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Protocol is that this group asks questions after we hear the other side, and then we can go outside after, and we've had requests from the unions to speak as well, which, which we're going to oblige to do, I am obliged to do, so I feel happy letting you speak, so we'll go from that. Emrys, a lot of comments about the saving, the wages saving, I think that came out of what, what was said there, but I'll let you have your say now. And Delith, if you feel you need to, sorry, sorry, I'm used to the names, if you feel you need to come in after Emrys, please do.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks to the scrutiny committee for giving me the opportunity to come here today. Before I move on to my own notes, I think the officer has mentioned proposal five, he's used the word saying that financial, that should be external, there should be word there, I think I missed, I may have missed heard, I'm sorry if I did, but the first thing I want to say is, it's good to know that members are concerned about this proposal regarding the libraries, I am also concerned regarding it, and I'm confident that the cabinet would not have agreed to this proposal if the financial situation was different. We need to remember that the financial challenge facing the council at the moment is completely new, and in that context, this decision was made. We, it was clearly in the cabinet meeting that the decision to reduce the, I made it clear that I wasn't comfortable with this decision to reduce the hours, and I'm also very clear that we unfortunately have no choice but to accept a reduction in the library service if the council want to respond to the financial challenge and set a budget. I'm also clear that the decision supports, safeguards our libraries as far as that can be done in this financial climate. It's important to emphasise that a proposal, proposal ensures that no library in Derbyshire will have to close. I'm also comfortable that the cabinet have listened and have responded to the feedback from the public consultation. The decision was reduce the opening hours of libraries to around 40% rather than the reduction of 50% that was proposed originally, which leads to about 80 additional opening hours compared to the proposal that was consulted upon. So with sadness, it was with great sadness that I proposed this to the cabinet, I wasn't wanting to cut the services at all, but the decision made by the cabinet reflects the best result for libraries, considering the financial situation that we are in. I obviously respect the right for members to call the cabinet decision back, and we're happy to discuss the issues discussed in the call-in documents today. Those are my opening remarks. Thank you, Emrys. Gwyneth?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to the comments that were made by members who spoke, if that's right. Hugh said, first of all, that the consultation had been ignored. I don't feel that that is true. I feel very strongly that 100% of the cabinet were against these cuts, we're not happy with the cuts, we don't want to have to make the cuts, but we have to because of the financial situation that's been enforced on us, not only on us, but on every council and local authority in Britain, that exists in all of those. There isn't enough funding from the Westminster government and local authorities, so we're in the situation we're in, and we've got to do this. We're not ignoring, Emrys has considered carefully the consultation, and we've looked at that. Emrys has considered carefully the consultation, and we've looked at that. And another point I'd like to make, Hugh has mentioned key performance indicators that will be affected. And I'd like to know what specific indicators he's concerned about, if possible. I'll just finish, and maybe Hugh could come back and tell us at the end. Or anybody else, any other member who assigned the call back. Terry then came in and mentioned the fact that there would be no loss of jobs. And I think maybe he didn't remember the discussion clearly in Cabinet, because it is possible that there will be job losses. We're hoping that there won't be any, and that we'll be able to move people around. He is correct, looking at the figures, most of the savings come from salaries. So it is possible that there will be job losses. We've been totally open about that from the start. And that's something else that the Cabinet have considered in coming to this decision. So that isn't correct. There is no creative accounting here. There are true savings. Terry also mentioned a project that he thought would be mothballed, and whether that could be prevented in order to ensure that no other cuts would have to be made. I doubt that. I'm not aware of any project that could be stopped at the moment in order to save a substantial amount of money for the council. If he knows of one, I'm asking if he could share that with us, please. James mentioned a one-way street that we're going down. We know that the library service has been cut back in 2010, when the Westminster government started on austerity. And when that happened in 2010, it was a one-way street. Nothing came back. The service didn't increase when the financial situation improved. But Emrys is going to establish a working group in order to look at how we can maybe through alternative methods, increase the service in the future. So that, I think, shows that to us, it's important at the moment that this isn't a one-way street, and that we're looking at ways to come back. Justine mentioned the impact on people who can least tolerate this in society. And this has also been considered in the decision made by Cabinet. There is a Willbing impact assessment that was carried out on this. It was negative. And as a Cabinet, we're totally aware that this isn't a decision that will be of advantage to anybody. It's going to be a disadvantage to everyone. So I do consider, as a Cabinet, when we made this decision, we have considered all, I think we have considered all these issues in the document, apart from this project that could be mothballed, that could save the world. But apart from everything else, we have considered. There we are. Thank you very much. Thank you, Gwyneth. I'm going to call Liz and Tony to say a word. And then I'm going to go back to the signaturearies to speak, and Gwyneth and Emrys. After that, they can respond. I'm afraid you'll have to wait till the committee have asked their questions, and then we'll go out to the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I'll start, if I may, Liz. Just to pick up on a couple of the issues that have been raised so far this morning, and Gwyneth has responded to a great many of them already. But in terms of, I think, the first question that was raised by councillor Hugh Irving. I do think the head of service and the lead member are very familiar with the activities that take place within our libraries. I think they probably are more familiar than anybody about those things. And so I don't think anybody has developed any of these proposals blindly, without taking those things into account. I think it's very difficult for the head of service and the lead member to have developed the proposal, because they are obviously entrenched in the library service and support it greatly. So that's one point I wanted to make. Gwyneth has addressed the issue around the savings, and I would agree, the savings are there. What we did say at Cabinet, that we do hope to minimise the number of redundancies as part of this process. And as members know, we have tried at the moment not to fill all of the vacant posts that are being carried by the council. And one of the reasons we're doing that is to allow for potential opportunities for people who are at risk of redundancy to move into different roles. That's something we will actively try to do. We can't guarantee that that's going to happen in every case, which is why there is a risk of redundancies from this proposal and this decision. But we're very clear about that, and Cabinet were very clear about that, in my view, when Cabinet considered the issue and made the decision. There was a point about the libraries being kind of a soft touch or an easy target, if you like, and that this was a disproportionate impact on the library service. I think the reality is, and I think members are aware of the overall financial position, and the fact that there will be many council services that are subject to significant cuts over the next six months. And therefore, a 22% reduction in the library budget is not disproportionate in that context. I think there will be many other council services which are subject to a much higher percentage of budget cuts than that. So I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. But I think the overall point, and Gwyneth has made the point already, but I would agree with it, is that Cabinet debated the issues that have been raised in the call-in, the five reasons at great length during their debate. And they made the decision reluctantly, I would say. They made the decision with those issues in mind. None of us like this. I think that's fair to say. And that goes for officers as well as the Cabinet. But obviously, from my perspective, the Cabinet were fully cited on those issues and made the decision, as I say, a balanced judgement with those things in mind. So that's my overall perspective on the issue, Chair. But I don't know if Liz would like to come in with anything more specific. Thank you.
Liz.
De chavahor. I think that most of the points have been answered by the lead members and by Tony. I think the one point I would make is that the decision by Cabinet to reduce the core budget by the percentage that's been discussed is, for me and my team, a starting point. And, you know, I know as well as anybody the value and impact of our library service. And so it's, you know, my commitment to mitigate the reduction in that core budget by working in partnership with any willing partners, so that we can maximise the use of the library service and the library buildings going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Terry, I'm going to call you back. And there were some questions that Gwyneth would like. But you're not coming backwards and forwards. This is, you know, I can't go back and forwards all day. But so I'm going to allow all the speakers to come back, and then we're going to go to the group, okay?
I don't want to come back and forth, Mr Chairman. I'm quite happy to answer the questions. Okay, I made a few notes. Emrys mentioned that we had no choice. That was exactly, no choice to save this money. But not one of the four speakers, not one of the four, has actually explained where this £280,000, again, I'll bring you back to page 18 of the report, and the frontline post of the management and supervisor reductions add up to just short of £280,000. Nobody has actually mentioned where that figure came from and how are those savings? Now, Gwyneth came along and said that possible, that there will be job losses. It'll be possible. Tony Ward mentioned minimise redundancies. Liz Greve didn't mention anything about redundancies. So again, I come back to what I said earlier. Where is this £280,000 come from? Now, Gwyneth also mentioned that it's not possible, oh, she's not aware of projects where it could save more money. Okay, well, just one that I can think of, Mr Chairman, is the Queen's Market in Rill. Now, I thanked Tony for, he's furnished me with some information very recently, and I haven't had time to digest it, and I will get back to Tony on that. But other projects, I mean, just for example, the Queen's Market, they spent £13.5 million on, in Rill, on this white elephant that doesn't have an operator.
Let's just hold it there for a minute. I'm going to ask Liz Thomas to come in, and then I'll come back to you, Gwyneth, if that's okay. Liz, can you explain so far the questions Terry's come? Terry, don't go off the subject, please.
Thank you, de chavahor. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Just to clarify then, I suppose, the costs that we're talking about and how they have an impact and what was discussed at the Cabinet meeting. So when you've got proposals such as these, you know, you can't be certain what the redundancy costs are going to be. We're talking about countywide proposals affecting a number of individual members of staff that are all in different locations. So until a decision is made by Cabinet, you can't move forward with those discussions and then determine what the actual redundancy costs will be. Those individual members of staff will need to make their decisions, and the redundancy costs will be linked to those as individuals, what their career histories are. So it's difficult to determine what they are. What was included in the Cabinet report, and that's in the financial costs area, was a range. So it had a range, so the Cabinet were aware of what the range of those potential redundancy costs could be. The minimum was zero, because everybody could be redeployed into vacant posts across the council, which Tony has already mentioned. And the maximum was stated. So in bringing the proposal together, Liz's head of service has looked through the staff structure that she's got now compared to what this proposed staff structure would be around the opening hours for each one of the libraries, and costed out then what the cost would be, were those people all to need to be made redundant on a compulsory basis. So we have the range, and it was from zero to £236,000 in redundancy costs. That's the best information that Cabinet could have had, and it's still the best information that we've got in order to discuss the proposal. What I would say is that redundancy costs are one-off costs. So they're incurred once. So they would be incurred in year one, when you're introducing the proposal. They're not recurring costs, which is what the savings are. So the savings are, just to clarify, they're £360,000. I think a figure of £330,000 was mentioned. They're £360,000, and they are included in a table. There's no mention of utility costs. The majority of the savings will be from staff reductions. If those staff are redeployed into other budgets that we hold within our overall £250,000, £260 million budget, they will move into those. There are budget for those, and therefore we can reduce the budget in the library. So I'm confident that we would be able to make that £360,000 saving. In the budget workshops that we've been holding over the past few months, though, that £360,000 figure is included in there as part of the major savings proposals. So it is included in how we move forward and hopefully set a balanced budget later on this month. And remember, these are recurring savings. So by the time we get to year five, we will have made £360,000 worth of saving every year. So in year five, we'll be at £1.8 million in terms of savings that build up as we go through the years. Does that help to sort of clarify the costs?
Yeah, please. Gwyneth, can you put on, to me show?
Gwyneth, before you come back, I don't want to...
I don't want to open a debate on budget savings today with Terry's previous comments. So can we just park that for a budget briefing, if you don't mind?
That's fine. I mean, what I will answer, Terry, you know, the answer that Liz just gave now is comprehensive. But, and I think this is key for this meeting. Cabinet were fully aware of that. That was absolutely clear during the Cabinet meeting. The savings were mostly coming from staff savings, and that there may be redundancies. That was always clear. Cabinet were fully cited on that when we made our decision. Very, very quickly, on the Queen's Market?
I'm not having it. No, no, we're not having it. I've stopped Terry, and I'm going to stop you, sorry, de chavahor.
Well, yeah, I just come back to this figure, and Liz Thomas, not this Liz, the far Liz. She actually explained that, yeah, that staff, that Liz, front Liz, will save, will go to another department. So that just reinforces what I said before, that the budget will come out of Liz Greve. Or the savings that Liz Greve will make.
Can I just stop you for a second? I've just been Gary Williams in for one second.
I think it's just probably to understand the nature of what happens when an organisation like this, which is a good employer, has to tackle difficult situations around redundancy. What is very clear is that the reduction, as explained by Liz, will be a reduction in the number of people required to work in the library service if this decision is implemented. That will mean that those people will be at risk of redundancy. Now, what we would be looking to do would be to work with those people to identify whether or not it was possible to redeploy them into other vacant posts within the authority. If they were to be redeployed within those vacant posts, there would be no redundancy payment. And they would be in posts for which there is already a budget. So the money that pays them whilst they work in the libraries does not move to anywhere else. The money that pays them in any redeployed position is money that exists in that service. So the saving is made because you're overall spending less money on staff. Because whilst the people may have moved to another location, you're paying less money for staff because you're not paying them to be in the library service. I think that's fairly clear, but I just wanted to sort of underline the point, if that helps.
Thank you, Gary. Terry?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And again, I come back to this figure of £280,000 savings. And everybody's saying it's nailed-on savings. Well, it's not, because, you know, possible that there would be job losses, minimise redundancies. There's no hard and fast figure on how many staff are going to be cut and where the savings will be made.
Thank you, Terry. Would anybody else like to have a, from the signatures, let's come forward and... Yeah, James, thank you. Thanks, Terry.
Again, briefly, in response to Tony's figure that 22% is what should be the norm. If we're trying to save 10% across the board, and library service is having to take a 22% cut, and other areas might be worse, as he said, who's getting away light? And I say, is that fair? I said disproportionate. I still hold by my phrase of disproportionate. If the library service and other services are taking 22% hit, when overall we need 10% across the board. Thank you.
They're fighting to answer this question. I'm thinking it's Liz Thomas is answering it.
Yeah, I understand the question. There's, look, when it comes to, you know, our budget gap, as we heard on, what day of the week it was, Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, I'm forgetting where I am. On Tuesday afternoon, you know, we're looking, we're needing to make, to be able to set a balanced budget. We have got an increasing cost and pressures of £24.5 million. There is no right or wrong way of approaching how we Um, there is no right or wrong way of approaching how we do this, but what we have to recognise is we've got different services in different places. We have our two biggest budgets, our schools and social services. You would have heard me quote on Tuesday afternoon that they're between sixty and seventy percent. Um, uh, you know, it isn't, it isn't possible to do this in an equal way of, of giving a percentage reduction to every service in an, in an equal way because services are in different positions. You know, we have been discussing the way our budget strategy um for this year and one of those was to come up with major savings proposals and each head of service has brought those forward and this is how we come to the library. The, you know, the, the proposal was for a much higher savings, I think it was four hundred and fifty thousand originally. So, but, you know, we had a consultation and the Cabinet have responded to that consultation and it's come down. So that wouldn't have worked had we issued everybody with a percentage savings. It's a difficult question to answer though. Tony, I don't know if you've got anything to add to that?
No, I think, thanks, Liz. I think, yeah, I think what you've said is correct, isn't it? You know, we, it's just not, it just wouldn't have been a, a reasonable approach to take or it wouldn't have been possible to have just said to every service, well, you've got to, you've got to save ten percent of your budget because some services are in a better position to be able to do that than others. Uh, we know that there are huge pressures on social care budgets, for example, already, and those services, because they are demand-led and those demands are increasing year on year and costs of delivering those services are going up year on year, they, they really struggle to stay within their existing budgets. And cutting ten percent off those budgets means that people won't be receiving care in children's services and in adult social care. Now, that's when it becomes a really difficult situation and which, which, why I was saying for some functions in the council, they're likely to see bigger budget reductions than twenty-two percent because the saving for each individual function of the council can't be the same, the percentage reduction can't be the same for each one. So for some services, the reluctance for some functions, the reduction in their budget might be zero because it's impossible to reduce it, but for some functions, the reduction might be a hundred percent. There may be some functions in the council that we just have to stop doing. So the cut will be a hundred percent in that, in the budget for that function. Some will be in between and this is one of those where the proposal or the decision that was made by Cabinet was to reduce it by somewhere in between because there was a, it was felt that there was a proposal there that was manageable and although, you know, you know, regrettable, it is manageable and because the council has to make these savings. And even, even with this saving and all the other savings that are currently on the table, there is still, there is still a gap. So it's not like we're in the, at the moment, we're not in a position to say, well, it's this one or, you know, or pick something else off the list. You know, there's, there, there's much, there are many more savings to find yet and heads of service are currently in that process of identifying what else they're gonna have to stop doing over and above this proposal and all the other ones we've already discussed. I hope that helps.
Okay. Justine, do you want to come back? No, no. Brian, do you want to go back? No, I'll open it up to the, to the committee then, please. Um, I think Mervyn had his hand up first, actually.
Uh, thank you, Chair, de chwau'r. Um, just a couple of things really. I mean, on the, on the paper, we've got page seventeen, uh, four point four, um, just to quote it, there are only two ways to make significant savings in the library, one-stop-shop services, either close libraries or reduce the opening hours of libraries. A short sentence, um, not, not very wide in its thought, although there are further bits in it, but uh, you know, and, and we've also today had a letter from Unison, you know, which should probably put as a fairly strong Labour voting organisation really, uh, who are, who are against it. Is anybody from Unison talking today on it?
Yes, he's allowed to talk at the end. Thank you.
Uh, so you, you can see some of the support's there, but I, I just think that, you know, that there are areas that we're not missing, that we're missing, you know, like sort of things that we could do with the library. We're, we're, we're at the finishing post here really with this job and we're almost getting pushed to make decisions because this budget has got to be in by, I don't know when, it's got to be decided by end of January or end of March or whenever it is now, it's sort of quite confusing because we're having heads of services coming to us in March to give us some decisions, but I'm not sure when, you've got to make the decision on your budget. Uh, so we've got like three minutes, three and a half seconds to decide on whether that's right before we give you a yes or no to that. And we've known since over twelve months ago, and I know Liz, you weren't here then, but we've known since over twelve months ago that we were in problems and, you know, because we've all had to deal with our budget in our own households to deal with increased electric, reduced thing, you know, everybody's after sort of more money. So we, we know about things like that, really. We've known about it. So I just feel that we're pushed into it. You know, have, have we looked at, uh, because, you know, the libraries are being used as community hubs and things, has anybody looked at, I call them Gwynn Timor and Gwynn Timonif, you know, we've got the wind farms off the coast, we've got the Brenig and Cymfryd up there. Have we looked at possibly maybe being able to ask them to see if we can support? Because the response that's come back from the library is showing a massive response of public need, bigger than anything that's ever come in as a consultation since I've been on the council and probably since Bobby Feely's been on the council, it's been a bit longer than me and I don't think she might tell me whether there's been anything that's had a response that big. So there's a public interest in the library and we should be looking at different sort of funding on this one. Now then, just going back on to Tuesday's discussion that Graham Borse said to us, and Tony may be here to this one, Graham Borse said that, you know, redundancies, we've put a case out across the county for voluntary redundancies. Now, in the library one, so, so to keep it within the library, the voluntary redundancies there are in the libraries, Graham said that some of them, we won't make them redundant because they're too expensive to make redundant. So if somebody's been in the library service and they're too expensive to make redundant, do we say, no, you can't be made redundant because you're too expensive to go? Uh, that's one question. And the other question is with moving them across from jobs to jobs, from the library to, so can we make a librarian? Can we force a librarian to say be a bin wagon driver or maybe work in the new refuge place in Demby? Have they got a choice of what they're going to do? If they don't want to do it, if they don't want to do it and they've been in position for twenty-five years and they're expensive to get rid of, do they have a choice as, as an employee to, to do that? Um, I'm sure I've rabbitied on enough and I was a few questions like that.
Thank you, Mervyn. Uh, Gary's gonna, Gary is going to answer the first one and maybe Tony the second one about bin lorry drivers.
Uh, darch, Mister Cadareid. Um, I think we're talking about two different things. So um the voluntary redundancy or voluntary exit scheme, because it's not just about redundancy, is about asking members of staff across the organisation whether or not they would be interested in leaving the organisation on a voluntary basis through a mixture of redundancy or retirement, et cetera. Now, clearly that's a voluntary situation and the council would have to look at each individual application and the process is in place where those people who've made a formal request to be able to leave on a voluntary basis will have their cases considered. Um, and in considering that, there are two essential criteria. Number one, that the uh cost of that exit um has to be such that there is a saving that's being made um uh within a reasonable period. And secondly, whether or not that is a role that the council can afford to do without or not. Um, what you're talking about and, and the, the issue with the cost on voluntary exit is that it's not just the amount of money that gets paid to the individual, it's the amount of money it costs the council in terms of uh compensating the pension fund, et cetera, for that early release. So uh some of those figures can reach a, a very high level very quickly and um that's not money that goes to the individual, but it's money that it costs the council and therefore the council would say that's not something that we.
Because I wasn't asking, I said excluding the big council, I was going, I was focusing merely on the redundancies in the library, not about the whole council. I, I said.
No, I know, but you, you asked about voluntary, I'm trying to explain the difference between voluntary and compulsory. Okay? So where the council is looking to reduce staffing in an area, then it has to consult on those proposals with staff and those staff are at risk of compulsory redundancy. And the key word there is that there are risk of compulsory redundancy. Where we have compulsory redundancies, we are obliged to try and avoid those compulsory redundancies where we can by looking at whether or not across the suite of jobs that we have and vacancies that we have, that there is possible to redeploy people. And there's a conversation that needs to take place between the individual and the council to see whether or not there are suitable alternative roles for them to be redeployed into. If they're redeployed into those roles, then they get to continue with their employment and the council uh avoids a redundancy payment. The issue of whether or not those roles is suitable will depend upon the individuals um and the roles that are there and people have to be offered suitable redeployment opportunities. It's not about just dropping people from something they have no sort of possible uh ability to do, et cetera, but there's a conversation that takes place. But this authority will treat people with respect and with dignity and will go through those proposals and make sure that we seek to avoid compulsory redundancy where we can. Where we can, then we will observe our obligations and we will make the appropriate payments. But the voluntary scheme is a separate thing to compulsory redundancies. I hope that clarifies that.
Uh, thank you, Gary. Emrys, do you want to know, sorry, what is it?
Emrys, do you want to come back? Thank you. Could I respond briefly to some of the comments that I've heard? I can answer, can I answer Hugh Irving to begin? I've visited every library twice during the uh past eighteen months and the last time was uh up to the Cabinet meeting in December. And I'm going back to each one of them uh one by one. In terms of the response to the consultation, the report shows clearly that we have responded to the main point that has arisen. There are many other points as well, but the main one is to lose the use of the libraries for the, for external groups. Libraries can be open outside normal library opening hours that will then allow external groups to use the library. Maybe it won't be on the exact day that they, they're used to having the library open, but certainly the county service, they will go, they will try and ensure that anybody who wants to use the library outside library hours, that there is a means of admission to the library. Remember too, that there is no reason why any external service would give up using the services of the library. We're going to establish a group in order to look at how we will be able to use the service differently and every member will have an opportunity to become part of that group in order to uh move on uh with methods where we can improve the service uh from these, from these cuts. There will be a report on the library service that will come before the scrutiny committee at the end of this month and I hope that we, in twelve months' time, can provide such a good report as we've had in the past and we're hoping that we will have a good report at the end of this month and that we can ensure that the service that we already provide continues to be provided, but maybe in a slightly different way in, in some places. Thank you, Emrys.
Can I, can I just say a quick um
Yes.
Um, thing about, I've got to go to a prior meeting. I know this is very important. Is it possible for you to give me a proxy vote to, to Brian Jones? No. So if I'm not here, I don't get the vote. Okay, thank you.
Uh, yeah, just the uh point about the wind farm money uh that you raised at the beginning, uh, the council um can't apply for uh wind farm grant funding um uh directly, uh, but um there is um, there is grant funding available for a number of different activities um which could be hosted in libraries. So um that's one, that's one of the areas that we'd be looking for to mitigate the impact of the reduction in this core budget. Um, and that would either be directly or indirectly uh by reviewing our charging policy and uh um, um, bring, um, um, bringing in uh income into the libraries to be able to maintain their opening.
Mervyn wants to come back, thank you. And then Arwel.
Yeah, that, that's all very good, but by the time we've done this, we've lost some staff, key staff from the libraries and then, you know, and it's all very good of Emrys' discussion of having to have, you know, it's a bit like the, that we've left the door open and the horses buggered off down the field a little bit, you know, I, I think we're, we're, we're talking that sort of, sort of strategy really a little bit. And I just think that maybe, that I would think that possibly is a possibility, if there are possibilities of doing something, on that item four, it says there's only two ways of doing it, either cut the libraries or close them, whereas there are other options of doing that. And I would like to see that maybe somebody who's doing the recommendation today might add to the recommendation that we stall this recommendation to look at other things if there are possible, yeah, just under, if there are options that are available to make the libraries more um that they're going to survive with the staff that's there by exterior funding coming in. I don't think we should, we should let it all fall apart without looking a little bit further for, because we're only looking at possibly a saving of three hundred and twenty thousand. It's not big money and we're not sure that it's two hundred, three hundred and twenty thousand, it might not be anywhere near that. So it's very vague to me that I think that on something, on the amount of the size of the budget we've got to save, that I think we should give it a little bit more time to look at external funders or funding that could come in to save the life of the library. Thank you.
Gwyneth, the attitude.
Darch. Um, thank you. Do, do we, do we? I apologise because I'm new to the scrutiny procedure, as you know, I'm inexperienced as a councillor, so I, in this room, I'm one of the most. What, what I expected today was for the scrutiny committee to look as how we as a cabinet came to a decision and not to have justification from the officers, but justification from us as a cabinet that we had had all the information we needed to come to a decision. To answer Mervyn's question, yes, this is a question that we also asked, are there alternative methods of looking at grants and so on? It's a possibility that there are, but in terms of saving money for the budget, and this is, is important, this is why this decision has been made, in order to save money for the budgets this year, the only choice we had was what has been put in the reports. Now, Emrys has insisted that we establish a working group in order to look at things like this in the future. We're aware that they are possibilities, but maybe there'll be a need to change the method of taking action and so on in order to, to get access to the grants. But as a cabinet, yes, we have asked these questions in meet, in open meetings even and we as a cabinet are safe in ourselves that in order to save money for this budget, and that's what we need to do, that this is the only decision, the choice we had.
So we can get down to the nitty gritty and see what's, this is what I've done for the last six or seven years, um, and that's how I run the meeting. So everybody gets a voice, you had a voice, they've had a voice, everybody gets a voice, so we'll move on. Arwel, darch.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, an explanation as to why Delith isn't here. She's to see a medical specialist today, so I was asked to come in, in her place, so that's why I'm here. Libraries are an important part of every county. I've read the documents and they are important for our communities to use, they're a warm and social hub. It's a good place to practise your Welsh. It's going to affect the Welsh language, certainly. Those people who want to learn Welsh and those people who are fluent in Welsh, like myself, menteriaeth when I was chair, and I'm still on that committee, they are trying their best to use the, these libraries. And the question I will be asking, as, as Emrys said there, every agency, every outside agency will be able to use the libraries. every agency, every outside agency will be able to use the libraries. But Frydland Library, for example, is only open for fifteen hours. That, that's if, if this happens. Will those people who want to use it when it's open, will they have to pay for using the facility? The consultation is certainly against the cuts. We know that, we understand that. And these libraries are assets for the county. What is going to happen when they're closed? It's waste. People won't be able to use them. They won't be there. You're going to cut on activities, free activities for children, losing opportunities to work libraries for children to use to make, to do their homework. People who haven't got access to computers, it's going to affect people like that who are part of our communities. People need training on how to use computers and so on. And disadvantaged people will be suffering once again. Libraries are the lifeblood of our community. That's what somebody said during the consultation. I don't drive, my library is my life. Why can't you think about opening every library on a Saturday morning? That's when children want to use them. As Mervyn has said, look for funding now before making these cuts. To look for a way of opening them on a Saturday morning, that, that is a very important day for all of you. I'm looking now at Frydland. Frydland and St Asaf have supported the libraries already. We are part of a partnership. Frydland Town Council and St Asaf City Council have provided funding for years towards keeping the libraries open. There was a threat that both libraries have to close. There, there was a threat years ago that they'd have to close. And we, as town and city councils, kept them open. There was no discussion, no discussion at all before the cabinets with the St Asaf City Council or Frydland Town Council beforehand. Why wasn't that discussion held beforehand? We're part of a partnership to keep these libraries open. Why didn't you come to us and speak to us about this? I don't understand. Now you hope that we'll still support the, both libraries, that's what you're hoping. So I'm asking you, why didn't you consult with those two libraries before coming to this decision? Disert, for example, and Bodalwyddan, rural areas, they want to, people want to come into these libraries. And if you're going to cut down on the opening hours, when can those people catch buses into places like Corwen and so on? How can they come in? And I do ask you to reconsider this. You do more robust research work in the cabinet, so I will propose that you look at this again, cabinet members. Please, thank you. Thank you, Arwel.
I class myself as a fair chairman. Could we please, please not shout and clap if possible? It's if you don't mind, thank you. Thank you. If, if you do again, I'm going to ask you to leave, but thank you. Liz.
Just a, a, a point about consultation with Frydland and St Asaf councils. I met with the, the mayor and the deputy mayor and the clerk of Frydland Town Council. And also with the, the mayor and deputy mayor of St Asaf Council. I did meet with them during the consultation period and you'll see the response that they submitted as part of the official consultation as well. So that did happen before the proposal came to cabinet. And I, I am still in discussion with them. And in fact, we're visiting Frydland Town Council this evening as well. So we have great partnerships with the town council. Frydland Town Council are exemplary in how they consider the library a vital part of the community. And also look for ways of expanding usage of the library. Again, as just a, a point of fact, we will never be charging people to use library services. That's never going to be part of the, of any model. But because of the, because of the core funding that we've got, we've been able to be very generous in throwing open our library doors for other services, other groups, community groups, charities, businesses, et cetera. And have, have a, a policy whereby we haven't charged for people that aren't businesses to be able to use libraries. And I, that's the charging policy that we will have to review going forward. So when we talk about charging people to use libraries, I'm talking about the groups that come to use libraries. And outside opening hours in particular, obviously we need to, we need to cover our costs, but buildings are there, you know, they're well maintained. They, they work well and I'd like to see them being used more than they currently are. Both within opening hours and also outside opening hours.
Thank you, Liz. Arwel wants to come back.
So you're saying to me that when the, the libraries are not open, people outside different communities can come into the library free, free of charge?
No. And what I'm saying is that if people want to use the library for, say, Welsh Conversations class or something like that, if they want to use the library outside library opening hours to do that, then yes, we can arrange to do that. And we are already doing that in, in some places. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Yeah. So the groups, so, so it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be having libraries open outside opening hours for library services.
Yedrich are looking at Frydland and St Asaf again. Obviously each library costs a certain amount of money to run. Now, are you thinking, because St Asaf and us do give money towards, towards running of that two libraries. Is it fair that you want to cut forty percent on the amount that those two give towards the library? Is it fair? Did you cut forty percent on the twelve thousand pounds yearly we give in? Or did you just cut the rest for running the library? What's your proposal?
Okay, first of all, just as a matter of clarity, it's not forty percent. It's, it's less than that for St Asaf and for, for Frydland libraries, but that, you know, that's just a percentage. What we, what we did was we, we we looked at our current opening hours and, and we looked at reducing those opening hours. The, the original model that we consulted on, we discussed that with staff and with stakeholders. And we've come up with the, with the revised model. The, the contribution, the welcome contribution from Frydland and St Asaf has, has been twelve thousand pounds over, over a number of years. Obviously that's, that's covered less and less of our costs as, as the years have gone on. But to be honest, it, it's we've, we've accounted for them continuing to make that twelve thousand pound contribution. And, you know, very much hope they do. If they don't, we'll have to reduce those opening hours because that, that's what happened in the first place, as you say, when they first started making contribution. It was to reduce the, the, the reduction of opening hours, to maximise opening hours. So if, if the money does get taken away, we will have to reduce those hours in, in those libraries.
Diolch, Liz, Arwel. Emrys, you should have known.
Do you want to come back? Sorry, I know you want to move the discussion forward and I am likely to repeat what's already been said in terms of the organisation and the work of running the services and buildings and so on. Liz has made it clear that there won't be a charge for the use of resources. And it's important that, that people understand that clearly. The groups, many voluntary groups will still be able to use the library, maybe on exactly the same time as they're used to. But when libraries closed, the doors will still be open for those groups who aren't businesses. It's important to state that for them to have a free service. A reference has been made to some financial businesses using banks that those will be charged. In terms of St Asaf and Frydland libraries, I will also be attending the meeting of Frydland Town Council this evening. And hopefully we can understand exactly how the arrangement will work after the decision has been made, if that is confirmed by the cabinet in time. Thank you.
Lovely, Paly, and then Brian. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, for letting me come back again. I'm going, I'm going to go back a little bit on, on the commitments because we're, we're talking about Frydland and St Asaf contributing. Can I ask, has the conversation been had with any of the other library services of whether they would want to contribute towards putting something towards keeping their libraries open? Because if not, why not? Because we're at the last minute now, we've, we've been discussing this for a long time. Because town and community councils, I've been in meetings and it's, it's the time that precepts have just been set now. So if they felt that they strongly needed to put something, money towards a library, it would have been something they could have considered while they're setting their precept just up there, a little bit of a job there. So if you haven't asked, I'd want to know why you haven't asked them. Because it would have been an important question to see if we could have had a bit more money. And, and the same with the wind farms as well. Have we asked them? I know it might be a little bit late getting it, but asking them, would it be a possibility? Could we, if we put an application in, in a creative way to try and get some money to help keep the libraries going? Would we be eligible for funding? And then you could actually then sort of put that in your sort of guestimated budget, which is what you've got at the moment, we've done this and everything. You could put it in your guestimated budget, say, the wind farm might give us two hundred thousand, the Gwynn Tomord might give us another two hundred thousand towards the libraries. So then you've got four hundred thousand maybe, that might maybe be able to leave the system as it is. And possibly if you then had a little bit from Dembyshire, from Demby, Corwen, Chanderlag might contribute, the village ones might give a little bit in the, in the, in the mag areas towards it. It's a small contribution from everybody might have made it a strong case. If it hasn't been asked, I'd really want to know why we haven't been proactive in asking these people before we're making this cuts now. Thank you.
Yes, yes, if you think it's
Yeah, I'm following on from that question from Mervyn there. I'll apologize if I heard you wrongly. Did you say you, you didn't use the word negotiate, but you've negotiated with Rudland to have longer opening hours? You made some comment about longer opening hours for Rudland and I think you mentioned St Asaf.
Yeah, no, sorry, that, that was a misunderstanding. Yes, it was when, many, many years ago, when there was a proposed change in models of library services, there was a proposal around certain opening hours for St Asaf and Frydland. And that's where those two councils stepped.
So there's been no conversations as of today. Rudland will be open longer because they're contributing monies.
Proposal is as in the papers. I'm continuing the dialogue with them. Tony wanted to come in as well on that.
Yeah, thanks, Liz. Yeah, just, just on that issue, I mean, I suppose there's a, there's a couple of things I'd probably say. One is that the, the proposal has obviously been something that's been kind of common knowledge, public knowledge for quite a long time now. We did, the service did write to the town and community councils at the time of the consultation and we did have responses, Liz, from the town for quite a lot of the town and community councils. So they, they were certainly aware of the proposal. And although we had representation from some of the town councils, we didn't get any offers of, of any contributions to, to enable us to keep those libraries open for longer.
Yeah, did, was it a question that was asked? It was a consultation. I read the consultation. I fed back it myself. But I don't think there was anywhere in that consultation where I saw that they were, had a, had an, an asking for it. And, you know, we've got, we've got lead, we've got, we've got officers in Dembyshire and we've got lead members. And I think that could have been something, that could have been a conversation had with them. Because it wasn't what was asked of the consultation. Does anybody want to put any money in the hat?
I was just going to come to that. And to be honest, the second part of my answer was going to be, there's, it's quite a difficult timing wise at the moment because we all know, as we've discussed at great length, you know, collectively, that there are going to be lots of things that the council is going to have to disinvest from over the next year. We know what some of them are, or we know what the proposals for some of them are, one of them being the libraries. There, there are others that were already being discussed. There are others that we're not really clear what they will be yet. So there, there could be lots of things potentially that town or community councils may want to consider making a contribution towards. Because for them locally, that is a really important issue. So it's, there, there is a conversation planned with all the town and community councils around the collective kind of total of the things that the council is going to have to invest less in. And the conversation will be around whether those town and community councils want to contribute to any of those things. The timing with this is really difficult because if we were to say, I think, to the libraries at that point in time, well, you know, would you like to contribute to this? And then in a few months' time, there are a string of other proposals that comes, come forward. I think the town and community councils might say to us all, why didn't you tell us about those things at the time? Actually, those things for us may be more important than the library service. So we may have wanted to invest in the other things instead. So there's a really difficult timing thing in relation to that, the specific question for asking people for contributions. But as I've said, it was clearly very open and common knowledge to all the town and community councils what the proposal was. And we wrote to them. And they responded as part of the consultation. So I think there was probably ample opportunity for the town councils to put forward a proposal if they felt that, that they wanted to do so, even if we didn't ask the specific question of them. But we will be having that conversation with them about, about this and lots of other things. And as Emrys has said, you know, he's setting up a working group with members to look at the way forward in future and potential opportunities.
I've got six speakers. Jeanette, I have got you there. So you are
Any thoughts on the wind farm again? Just, you know, how would we approach that one?
They, they, they won't fund council for council operations. Not, they won't fund the council for council operations.
Moving on, outside the group now, if everybody in the group's finished. The first, that was Bobby Feeley, then Anne, then Hugh Hildridge. I have got David, Jeanette, Janet, sorry, and Peter Scott after. So I've got you down, okay.
Thank you, Chair. I was getting a bit worried because I have to leave by quarter to twelve. So thank you for letting me speak. The libraries are the beating hearts of the communities they serve. Trusted, neutral places where everyone is welcome, regardless of their age, background or financial circumstances. That's from our strategy on libraries. And I think that we can all agree with that. And Tony, I think it was Tony, mentioned social care. They do so much to contribute to the social care and the needs of the vulnerable. It's very sad that they're under threat. Can I just remind everyone that this decision is a cabinet decision? So it will be taken by the nine members of the cabinet, even though there are forty eight of us altogether. I certainly agree that the situation in with Arwel, that the situation in Frydland with Arwel, that the situation in Rhydylan and Stasif is, seems to be rather unfair as they do contribute and help financially. We've been out to consultation and I admit to being not the biggest fan of consultations because they don't produce many responses. But in this case, they did produce a really good response, 4,500 upwards in the main against the cuts. 50% of residents in Dembyshe do use the library services in some way. Unison have written an excellent letter against the cuts, including giving some ideas as to what we could do instead of cutting. At least 40% of the backbench councillors, some of us are here today, are against these cuts. Even the cabinet members said they don't want to cut this service, all of them at the cabinet meeting. You know, it was heartfelt, they said, and I truly believe that was true. I appreciate, Liz over there, that Dembyshe are facing the largest funding gap in their 25 year history. But in targeting the library service, you have picked on a small dynamic service that punches way above its weight, as I've said before. And a 40% cut will destroy and decimate this service. I disagree with the lead members' view. We usually support each other, but in this case I disagree that it will come back. I don't think it will ever come back and be the same. So I would like to plead with every member of this community scrutiny committee to vote to send this decision back to cabinet for further consideration and discussion. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you Bobby. Next is Anne Davis, please.
Diamant, I would like to go down the practical route here of the reduced closing to Rhydylan libraries. And I'd like to question how much importance has been paid to the wellbeing of 2015? I personally feel that this should be re-looked at. Rhydylan, for example, has the highest number of residents over 80. Some years ago, the Health Board on Dembyshe decided a different model of care for our residents, looking after them in their own homes and in the community. Rhydylan library staff, the amazing staff we've got there, they do contribute greatly towards supporting our more vulnerable residents. For example, they're going there and pay the bills, some unbelievably don't have bank accounts. Attendance allowance forms, this support by obtaining that, the residents are able to have more care in the home and keeping them out of residential care. Blue badge forms, 14 page application. Library staff are helping the residents to complete these very difficult forms. And I feel that by reducing the hours, it's compromising the wellbeing of our residents, which will result more than that. They will need more care in the home, possibly residential care, hospital visits, GP visits, et cetera. Now, every summer, Rhydylan, all our libraries run a reading challenge. Now, in Rhydylan alone, over 100 children take part in this and this contributes to their education moving forward. This summer, I introduced a family of five to Rhydylan Library and they were from Syria. Now, the delights on those children's faces when they walked into the library, you know, was quite touching really. And the library staff have helped support them with language and different sort of thing. The support they give the communities, is it recognised by all the officers, members, cabinet members? I feel like reducing the, the opening hours to our residents is a great injustice to them and it will come back and bite us. They will need more care in lots of different ways.
Adiach, Anne, de wau, thank you. Hugh Hildridge Roberts, please. Ah, yes, yes.
Could I respond to councillor Bobby Feeley and councillor Anne Davis? To begin with, thank you Bobby and Anne for coming forward. Beating heart of the community, yes we are. And that heart will continue to beat. Maybe we will have some groups will have to change their day if required, if only absolutely necessary. But as we've said previously, the library and the building will be available for activities under social services where Bobby emphasised and also from where Anne also mentioned social care. And also regarding elderly people going there to pay bills and so on, so on, that will continue. Okay, maybe they will have to go and pay their bill on a different day. And if that's possible, the problem won't exist. But if, if not, I'm confident that the county will speak to these individuals to ensure that there will be periods available for people to go into the libraries to do the work carried out in the one stop shops.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to highlight that obviously there was a wellbeing impact assessment undertaken on the proposal before it went to cabinet. So of course, that was considered by cabinet as part of the deliberations and decision making. And of course, everybody cares about this. I just wanted to make that really, really clear. So officers care, members care, cabinet care. So, and we understand all of the issues that are being raised today. And I don't want to speak on behalf of cabinet, but clearly officers hold those same views and cabinet did consider the wellbeing impact assessments and the impact that this will have when they made the decision. But Emerys is right, we're not closing libraries and all of the services that libraries provide now will still be provided in future. The library service just won't be open for as often as it is currently. So that is going to be less convenient for some people. But it's not completely taking those services and that support away. But of course, that was considered and it was acknowledged and everybody cares about this. So, thank you Chair.
Yeah, sitting down very quickly.
Come back Gwyneth, yes, very briefly.
Well being impact and it is negative. It's the position that we're in, you know, we're facing a financial hole. There's going to be lots of negative wellbeing impact assessments that we're going to have to look at and make decisions regarding, even though we don't want to. That's just the position that we've been put in.
Diamant, Hugh Hildridge Roberts.
Thank you. For those of you who know me, I don't keep still very long and I get frustrated and I have been quite frustrated in this debate. So I'm going to address a couple of things which has been said before I actually want to convey what I said. I have to Google a word to see another word for it because what I've heard is a little bit poppycock really. Because Tony, you're saying about timing, right? This council, this proposal has been on the table for a long time. You've known it was coming. You have had timing to talk to councils, rural councils, you've had timing to look at other options. That has not been done. For me, that has not been done. Emerys, you keep on saying that we can open the library out of hours. We've had to get rid of Rhythin Town Hall off our books because it was too expensive to open out of hours, to get a caretaker to open, to get a caretaker to close. But we need to look at it and the belief that this library service is going to come back and increase. Seriously, we're all realistic. And Tony, you said 22% of the cut towards libraries. Give me another department that's going to have a bigger cut. Because I, I don't see it, because this has been done in complete isolation. I understand, and what I'm going to say, I totally understand these cuts need to be made. And I don't envy the two lead members of Plough Cymru, which are the minority party of the cabinet, and you're fronting this, which are probably the biggest public impact and which will be on the doorsteps in the next election, it'll be Plough Cymru that have closed libraries. That will be the message that will be out there. So I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Arwel. So Gwyneth, Gwyneth said, confidence in the cabinet is why the calling was made, that you made the right call. That's what we're here to discuss today. Yeah. And I'm going to quote some of the officers and some of the lead members in what they said in the introduction. Gwyneth said, we're looking for a way back. That's what you said and it's great that we are, but we should have a plan already before we look for a way back. And I think that's really important because we don't have a backup plan. We haven't sat down with Dembyshe Leisure and said, can you put costers in every library? And increase, make a cafe or make something different. We haven't looked at that commercial element. It's just been a tick box. Let's get libraries saving, tick the box, move on. The word isolation is what this is about. This is complete isolation. Other members have talked about knock on effect on elderly, vulnerable, children's education, Welsh language, we can go on. The impact assessment is negative, as Gwyneth says, but the work around it to make it positive hasn't been tried. There is area of this that we can make so positive. We can turn this into something bigger, something like we did with the music service in Cutting the Cloth, when we got a better music service, even though we had to make a cut. But we're not, we're tunnel vision. Right? I mean, Gwyneth also said the vision is not of no advantage to anyone. But why isn't the discussion of the cabinet around the table, what advantages can we make of these situations we're in and make it better? Tony Ward says, none of us like this. Right? Solutions, not problems. But we're not having solutions. We've got the problem that we need to save and we're ticking a box. Gwyneth says she's not happy. Emerys Wynn, not comfortable, no choice. We all have choices. We do have choices. You could, you could, you can make a cut in a different part of the council, but because this has been done in isolation, that's not on the table. You know, tell me, other than maybe swimming pools and education, what other service in the council has this number of service users? You know, in Rhythin alone, it's nearly 40,000 people use the library. So there's no piece of work being done about the actual usage by residents of services before judging what the cuts are. And I'll come back, for example, and I know Gwyneth and Tony is capital not revenue, but, but you know, as a cabinet, you made a decision to spend 2.2 million on moving the archives into Flintshire. 450 odd people a year use the archives. When you do the maths on the library, it's massive. It's thousands. I think RILS, 40,000, 45,000? I can't remember. So what I'm saying is about the confidence in, in the, in the cabinet decision. When I sat at cabinet and the line I kept on hearing from the leader over and over again is, we've got to get it over the line. I don't like that language. I sympathise with the two lead members having to, to bring this in front of us. But I do not believe an appraisal of all options, you know, Liz says we can't have wind farm money in the council. No, but you could put social enterprises in, in, in the libraries and they could run them and we could fund them that way. But that hasn't been looked at. So what I'm saying is I urge as a committee that you send this back to cabinet with a proposal that comes with full understanding that we need to make the savings, but looking at other ways in which we can either opportunity, not negativity. And for some of the, some of you, you know, if you're, if you're interviewing a head of service and you looked at a CV and as I sat on some interviews of heads of service and directors over the last few years, I would always take it a negative that if they were boasting that they had 10 services that they closed or 10 libraries that they closed. What I would look for is, is the entrepreneurship of how they've increased the income of the, of the opportunity for the council. And that's what I absolutely feel that needs to be done and it needs to be done not in isolation, but as a complete, complete whole picture, a whole council approach. And that's why I think it's premature to take this decision now. And I fully understand you want to make saves. I'm not knocking that in any shape or form, but I just think we need to have an appraisal of other options and how the, the impact assessment can look more positive. And then I'm going to stop on my rant now, but as a local member, Emerys will be aware, we've lost Cogai Gold Shop in Rhythin in the last week. You know, football are down in our towns. We take libraries down 40%, some more in summer cases. If you live in Llandegla, you've got no bus and not a hope in hell of getting to a library if you can't drive. That's the reality now. So I honestly think that for me, that we need to look, and I just want to make sure as a, as a group, the independent group have asked me to convey that we do not support the 40% reduction in libraries in any shape or form, but we need to look at another way forward.
Okay, thank you. I think there's a good statement. Questions? Do you want to answer a couple of questions or statements?
If it's okay.
Emerys has got his hand up as well.
If it's okay, just one or two things. I'm going to see Hugh, you know, has listed a whole, a range of things there and some of those were directed towards me. So I feel as though I should respond in some way. The, I would disagree that this is, without, without trying, wanting to expand this into a wider debate about the entire budget. But this, I disagree that this is being done in isolation. You know, this is, this is one idea of many that have been developed as, as major savings ideas to tackle the overall 25 million pound pressure. So it's, it's not being done in isolation. It's just that we, each decision has to be made in its own, on its own merit, doesn't it? So that's why we're talking about this today in isolation. The, there are other services, I think, that are used equal, you know, by as many people across the council. The waste service, for example, is used by every household in the county. There's a project ongoing there to fundamentally change the way we do the waste service. And that's going to make it a cheaper service than the one we currently have. That's used by everybody. Highways are used by everybody and we've recently had the discussion about highways capital. And some members will be aware of that as well. And the proposal there is to reduce that by more than 22%. So I don't agree with everything that Hugh says, although he's made some really valid points. But nobody's boasting about this and nobody would ever be wanting to do that. But some of the things that Hugh mentioned, and I think Hugh mentioned, we, we, there was a, there's a couple of services, the music service, for example. CCTV was another one in the past where they were reshaped and funded in a different way. But the decisions were made to cut the fund, the council funding to those services before those things were put in place. So the council made the decision to remove the funding and then a new thing emerged, which meant that the music service, and I think it's widely regarded to be a better service than the one we had before, even though the council now doesn't pay for it. So sometimes that, the decision has to be made in order for something else to come, to come to fore in terms of a replacement or something, to do something slightly differently. But you know, I, I, you know, I, I totally sympathise with a lot of the points you're making Hugh and I certainly wouldn't, you know, disagree, you know, no, none of us like it, nobody likes it. Everybody will acknowledge that it will have an impact. But the, the danger of not making these decisions, this being one example, and spending a lot more time then looking at alternatives without doing it, is that we simply run out of time to set a budget. But Liz probably has more to say on that than I do, being the the head of finance and Gwyneth is the lead member for finance. But I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Emerys, do you want to come back briefly? Yes, very briefly. Tongue in cheek, I haven't been called Little Emerys for a few years. As Hugh Hilditch referred to me in Welsh. Despite that, I gave you a challenge at the end of cabinet and I think you gave me one in order to ensure getting these hours back and reopening. I'm confident that we can do that and that's why I accepted your challenge then. And I accept to, I continue to accept the challenge. It may be different, but certainly gaining hours back will be my mantra with this group that will be established in future and the group will look at different aspects of using libraries to. using libraries to. That's why I've insisted on getting the group because I'm not happy with having to make this proposal. I've made that clear. Nobody from the cabinet is happy to make it, but we have to do it and we want to make it work.
And Tony will tell you this, I really struggled against that one, didn't I? And I, 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 I got people from the world, from the Welsh government up here and everything like that because I didn't want to spend that money. And, and you know, basically we, we are in a situation where we have to. So it's not always so easy as to say, well, we, we cannot save, spend that and then we'll, we'll, you know, the archives was a very specific case and that's the problem with lots of things.
Yeah, right. That's, that's it now. I've got three speakers. Right, very quick. No, here we're not, no, no. No, I'm not. I've got three speakers and time's going on. I've got David, Jeanette, Jane Lynn, Jones, is it? And Peter Scott. So have all them together. Yeah, if they come up. Di, can you come up after? Sorry, yeah, no, sorry, David, David Williams. No, no, David Williams, Janet after, and then Peter Scott, and then Di, we'll have you after. Sorry, David. We'll take these all together.
Yeah, good to hear it. Um, I'd like to start by asking one or two questions to Liz. Thomas, please. Um. Just, just, um, just, uh, just say again, please, it's twenty four point five million shortfall, we anticipate, yeah? Now, you'll be quicker at maths than me, you've probably got to calculate. I've just done it on mental arithmetic. I think the saving of the libraries, even if you put it at three sixty, does that equate to about one point five percent of the budget? I think, well, let's just assume it does. You check it, please, Liz. I, I honestly cannot see the rationale between even looking at this for a start. We are looking at it in isolation, but that's the other one I wanted to ask you, Liz. When do you have to prepare your, sorry to interrupt your calculations, but when do you have to have the, prepare a budget by? What timescale?
Budget proposals are going to camp the next cabinet meeting, which is on the twenty third of January. So the reports, I've, I've signed it off and sent it yesterday. The report has gone.
Besides the library issue, can I ask you how many heads of services have pretended their reports for scrutiny? So that we can look at everything rather than just libraries in isolation. Can I ask you that one?
It's, so in terms of the savings proposals that are included within that, how many of those have gone through scrutiny? Is that the question? Just to, yeah, okay.
We're making, we're making decisions, although Tony disagrees, it is in isolation because we haven't got, as, as far as I'm aware, there was talk of it coming through in March, that there wouldn't be reports ready until March. Well, how on earth can a council make rational decisions about where to make cuts and how deep they should be? When we, we've only been, we're only looking at one option, libraries, which is a drop in the ocean compared to, I think it is one and a half percent. A drop in, sorry, if I can just continue, a drop in the ocean, um, compared to what we need to save. So, and my other, I just fail to see how anyone can look at this in all seriousness, because I tell you what, you might not like to hear it, and I don't mean it in a disparaging way, but this, this is regarded as a joke by a lot of people with financial acumen. You seriously telling me that all this hoo-ha and disruption to save three hundred and thirty thousand pounds out of a budget deficit of two, twenty four and a half? And you're going to impact the most vulnerable members of society? That this cabinet, this Labour Socialist Cabinet reports to support the most vulnerable members is going to impact them more than any other group. And I just, I don't know what planet you're on. You're looking at saving three hundred and thirty thousand, which is nothing, and all the hoo-ha and grief it's causing. Beyond me. I'm sorry. Was I right in those calculations?
Thank, thank you, David.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just, just make the point that, um, lots of the savings that we're looking at are around this level or even maybe smaller. They all add up. That's the point, that we don't have the saving which is going to cover.
Yeah, it's three hundred and thirty thousand.
We're looking at some things that they're saving as twenty thousand or forty thousand.
We don't know about them, do we? We don't know about them.
Let, let them answer. You've had your, you've had your piece.
You, you have been informed about, um, about the savings plans. Uh, the, the non-strategic savings specifically are made up of lots of little, um, savings that, that, that department heads and heads of services are deciding on. So, you know, it's not, compared to lots of this is a fairly large saving. And Liz is nodding there, you know, so it's, it's, it's not insignificant and they all add up. And that's how we're going to have to deal with it. And yes, it impacts the most vulnerable. We know that. But we're in this position because as a local authority, we're not being funded correctly by long.
David, before you come back, can I just ask Gary to come in? He wants, he's, he's been biting my heels.
Well, I, I just would make the point that there have been a series of budget workshops that, uh, information has been provided to members about both the major savings and where those have been through a cabinet CET process. There's been a meeting arranged for members to be able to ask questions about those things. And at Denby Town Hall, there was a budget workshop where each of the heads of service in turn came to explain to members what the non-strategic savings that have been grouped together, because there are lots of little things from two thousand pounds here to thirty thousand pounds there, to explain to members the sorts of things that they were going to be doing. Many of those decisions are decisions which are wholly within the delegated authority of those officers to make because they have to manage their budgets. So I, I would just with respect say it's not correct to say that members don't know about the other savings that are being made. And it's not correct to say that this is a saving that's being made in isolation. Because of the nature of decision-making that is applied to local authorities by law, uh, the council sets the budget, but the individual measures, many of them are executive decisions which the law says cabinet must make. So when people say it's only being made by X number of cabinet members and not the whole council, that's because the law says it has to be made by that body. Because those are the people who have the executive function and the executive responsibility. So I think I just wanted to clarify a couple of those things because I think otherwise we're in danger of getting carried away with this is a single thing that nobody knows anything about anything else because that's not, that's not correct. Members have had lots of information about other things and we've got processes that we're taking them through. This is a decision that's required to be made. If it's to be made, it's required to be made by cabinet. And scrutiny is entitled to call that decision in and that's what we're doing. So that's, that's why you're talking about libraries today.
Do you want to come back, David?
Very quickly, yeah, I fully accept what you've said, Gary. Um, but I would say to this, this cabinet, we, we know there's going to be massive cuts everywhere. But as the party of the people, Labour and Plaid, why not just hold this up as a beacon of light? We're saving libraries. There will be no cuts to libraries because it's the most vulnerable members of society. So that is one saving grace in all the carnage that is going to ensue. And maybe that might just save you a few votes. I don't know, you know, in, in the future elections, it might just win some votes.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Um, Jeanette, thank you for being so patient.
Nice. It's a pleasure. Thank you for letting me speak. Um, I'll cut it short because, um, Bobby and Hugh and David have all, um, touched on what I was going to say anyway. But I'm going to bring it down to being a councillor now and justifying yourself as your local councillors. What I must repeatedly is, um, how can we justify cutting the main services to libraries? And yet you want to change the bins? I know you expect us to explain the ins and outs of it. But the majority of people, um, in our wards, they don't see it like that. And it's very difficult to explain why we're going to cut library services and yet take all their bins away and give them new ones that they've never wanted anyway. A, a considerable amount of cost. You see, and I'm talking now as the general public because these are the questions they ask us as a councillor. And it's very hard to justify saying, oh, well, you know, we're going to have the savings in the future on the bin circulation. And they, I mean, in no uncertain terms, they tell me to get a life and what the hell am I thinking about? Because we are going to be doing a considerable amount of moving of bins at a great deal of cost and yet cutting library services. And I want, um, probably, how can I explain that to the residents of my ward? It is very, very difficult to justify you spending a fortune on one thing that really should have been left and on another one. So that's a different angle to it, Chair. And thank you for letting me speak, but I mean, I hope that realistically cabinet will relook at this very important, um.
Two words still. Thank you, Chair. Very briefly, I mean, it's obviously two very different things, the library service and the, and the bin proposal, but, uh, you know, I, we will be, we, we will be embarking very shortly on a, on a big communications campaign around that. We're going around all the mags, um, in the next month or so. And we've got meetings in town and committee councils and we'll be going out with a comms campaign to the public about the reasons why we're changing uh, the waste collection service. And, um, you, you know, we'll be explaining to people those reasons. It's, it's for environmental benefits. Um, one of the, one of the knock-on benefits for the council though is that the new service will be cheaper than the current one. So, um, it also.
Not to them though, Tony, not to the people.
It's to us and we're prepared, Jeanette.
Okay, okay, right, right, right. Stop you there. Tony, could you have a word with Jeanette outside this meeting over bins? That'd be great. Thanks, Jeanette. Thank you. I've got my, um, Peter Scott and then the, the vice chair. So, and then we're closing the debate and then we'll, we'll, we'll have, um, uh, Brian Jones is going to sum up and then we've got Emerys sum up. But in the meantime, we're going to have Di in between, Di Morgan, to give us a bit of a, um, speech as well. So, uh, Peter, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I've, I've turned up so much I'll speak. Uh, I'm, I'm talking with me St Asaf City West County Council's hat on, not Chair of the Council hat. Um, and I, and I'll, this is really just for a point of clarity because I've heard most of what I was going to say has been said, but one for our, well, um, the, the, the cut initially for the libraries was fifty percent. Uh, it went down at the last meeting to forty percent. When we did the calculations with Liz for St Asaf, it's thirty three percent. So we've, with talking, we've had, we've had a little reduction at St Asaf. I'm still in negotiation with Liz and, and I'll talk as much as I can. Uh, we, we did have a meeting with Liz, just to clarify again at the beginning in the library with Liz and Colin and Jill DeClarke for the council. My own point really is back in two thousand and sixteen, when we did a service level agreement with Denshire, that we would pay twelve thousand pound a year to help with the cost of running the library. At that time, we thought everybody was doing it. And in fact, we've found out since that there was only us and Riddland that joined in with that goal. And to this day, having, having just paid January's, uh, payment, we've paid eighty four thousand pound as a councillor at St Asaf into keeping the library open at St Asaf, which we could have done a great deal in St Asaf with eighty four thousand pound, I must admit. So it's disappointing that we've had to pay that and no one else has. I'm, I'm pleased that we've got it down to thirty three percent. And I say I'm still in negotiations. Uh, if we hadn't have had these cuts right at the start, we wouldn't have been here talking about it. So we wouldn't have had to negotiate with anything. We could have just carried on as normal. And that's all I wanted really to say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Peter. What was the statement there? Karen, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to come back to Gary Williams, um, when he mentioned that, uh, that the councillors had had numerous, well, three, I think it is, budget workshop meetings, and you specifically mentioned the one that happened in Denby. Um, I'd just like to say that by the time the officers had finished speaking, there was actually very little time for members to ask questions and it was a point raised at the time. Um, so that's number one. Number two, I have a question about, I know that you've explained about the voluntary redundancies and the compulsory redundancies. Well, what happens if there are no voluntary redundancies and staff don't want to be relocated? That you will be faced then with compulsory redundancies, won't you, which come at a higher cost? Am I right there? Is that, is that, is that correct?
I think I've already, yeah, I've already explained it, that the voluntary scheme and a compulsory, um, uh, proposal are different things. In respect of the library proposal, that's a proposal that's already in consultation with staff. And therefore, if people don't volunteer and there are not enough volunteers, um, and compulsory redundancies have to be made, then they would follow the compulsory redundancy policy. The point that's been made is the efforts will be made by the council to try and redeploy as many of those people as possible. So nobody can sit here and tell you there will be X number of compulsory or voluntary redundancies within that service because we just don't know. But people who are already in a consultation in respect of a proposal uh, would be entitled to, uh, compensation under the compulsory scheme.
So it's an effort of button, a maybe then maybe at the moment.
Well, to be fair, Karen, I think, um, I can do the explanation again, but, but as Liz pointed out, you consult on proposals. You do not know at the outset of those proposals, how many compulsory redundancies will need to be made. And as she explained, the cost of redundancy is a range between zero and an amount that's been put in, in the report. So it is if and but, but it's clear that the saving that would be made would be made each and every year. And the redundancy cost would be a one-off payment, which Liz did explain previously. So in terms of the redundancy things, I, I think it's relatively clear. There will be a forty percent, if the proposal is upheld, a forty percent reduction in the opening hours, which will have a reduction in the hours of staff required to, to, um, be employed to deliver the service in those hours. There may or may not be compulsory redundancies. It depends on how the proposal consultation goes and what, if any, um, opportunities there are to redeploy people. In terms of the budget workshop, I didn't comment on the amount of time that people had to ask questions. The issue, the point I was making was that people were saying that they, uh, this was being considered in isolation without people knowing what other things were being considered. When it's clear there has been a workshop and heads of service have explained to members those are the things that have been considered. I just didn't want anybody to get the impression that this was the only thing being considered, that nobody knew anything about any of the other savings, because that's not correct.
Right. Stop that, right there now, and move on to Di Morgan. Di, thank you, thank you for being patient with us and it's, it's really nice to see the union here today. And we welcome outside people to come to the meetings to talk. It's really important what we do and members of the public. Thank you, Di.
Uh, yeah, thank, thank you very much, Chair, for, um, for allowing me to speak. And, um, uh, it seems clear, um, Unison's put in two, um, submissions, a detailed one at the time of the consultation and the one today. And it's clear from the, um, the words of, of the members and officers that that's been considered in, 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 in all of the debates that's happened. So I'm really, I'm very pleased at that, that we've had that opportunity. Um, particularly because, um, as, as impressive as it would be if I was a genius and I'd come up with all this myself, the reality is even more impressive is that the library staff themselves have come with these proposals. They're tremendously dedicated. They, they're absolutely committed to the service. Um, they're tremendously talented, skilled and intelligent, uh, 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 part of our workforce. Um, and it would be an absolute tragedy if we were to lose any, any single one of them. And that's, um, that's one of the key things that, that, that needs to be said is that, is that, um, um, managers are working to minimize redundancies, as been said, that's correct. But nevertheless, that doesn't mean that they'll be able to, 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 to reduce that to, to zero. So we, I think it is realistic, we'll, we'll be facing some compulsory redundancy. But beyond that, it's much worse because we've got the situation that people who will be facing a cut in hours, not being said that they may, maybe just facing a cut in hours. Um, it will bring them into poverty, it'll bring them to a situation where continuing to work for the council is no longer a viable economic, uh, possibility for those individuals. And that is our, uh, a huge concern, that those staff then are, are sorry to say, are lost. And the connections that they have in the community, um, are lost with that. Um, when cuts proposals for libraries are, 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 are generally considered, have been considered elsewhere in the country, one of the first responses is for, um, a counter-proposal to, to begin to expand the role of libraries as community hubs, et cetera. But let's be clear, in Denshire, that's already, that's already taken place. So we've already gone through that process. This is, this is not the beginning of the cut to the library. This is, this is, this is one of a, uh, uh, further down the line. And by being community hubs as they are, the, um, the libraries play a massive role as the front of house of the council for all sorts of internal services. Um, some examples have been made, uh, social services, et cetera, but it's massive. It's a whole range of services and it's a whole range of government, national government services as well as those at the local level. Um, for those reasons, I think that, that the fact that the, um, the libraries are, 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 are. And for those reasons, I think that the fact that the, the libraries are, are, are up for a cut, it's, it's, it's a diffi-, it's something that, that we would oppose. That doesn't mean we haven't considered what are the possibilities to try and assist in a difficult situation that we face, which I too blame on, 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 on the overall funding from UK Government. We've considered this. One of the things that's been debated is in relation to the role that town and community councils might play. And what I have to say is that it is correct that it should be considered alongside the wider range of cuts. And we should approach the town, the community council and see how, how they can help us with, with this situation. But at the moment, we're saying we're going to take the decision on the libraries outside and separate from that process. And that's problematic because it deserves to be considered alongside the other proposals. The other thing about grants have been mentioned. One of the models that, that, that had been mentioned was about the possibility of social enterprises operating within our library infrastructure. And that social enterprises do have access to grants that the council do not. And, and that was the, the proposal made by Hugh. And that, that, that's an important one to consider. But actually, there's something much more significant, immediate and beyond that, that we also need to consider. And what that is, is that the council already has many services which are grant funded and are not part of the core funding of the council, but already operate as council services that are grant funded. They, we have an opportunity, if we consider the libraries alongside and the infrastructure that they have and what they have to offer alongside our property reviews which is taking place. We have the opportunity to consider, can we operate some of our existing grant funded externally funding services through the library infrastructure and therefore legitimately use that funding as a proposal to, 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 to fund some of the overhead or running costs or, 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 or other costs that the library faces and therefore mitigate a, 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 a situation as it stands. The example that's already taken place where that's the case is Work in Denbysia, which operates employability services funded by Welsh Government Grant Communities for Work and funded by the UK Government Grant Shared Prosperity Fund, operates from Real Library and contributes to the running cost of Real Library because it operates from that, from that venue. And it utilises and interacts with those services. It utilises interactive libraries right across the county, not just Real Library. And the potential to expand contribution from that grant or those two grants and from other grant funded services that already exist in the council is there. And that alongside the town and community council proposals are the things that need to be considered before this decision is made final. And those are the things that need, need to, need to take place. And, and that's why the reference plaque or the, the call, the calling is, is correct. And why Cabinet needs to think once again about these proposals. Thank you.
Thank you, Di. Great statement. Thank you very much. Right, I'm going to adjourn the meeting now for 10 minutes. And then when we come back, Brian or Hugh, I'm not sure he was back online, one of you are going to sum up your side. Emrys, you're going to do the summing up on your side. And then we'll go to the group for recommendations. So 10 minute break. Thank you. The second half of this community scrutiny on libraries, a one-stop shop. So we're coming to the, the summing up for the reasons of the calling. And we've got Brian Jones and then we'll have Emrys win as a response as Cabinet member. And then we'll have some proposals off somebody, I, I take it. So Brian, are you, are you going to do the proposals after, are you? All right, okay, okay. Yeah, fire away. Thank you.
Recovered. Right, thank you, Chair. First off, it's obviously the best scrutiny debate that I've sat in in six years, which is good to see. And I agree with you, even having the union rep with us as well, puts a complete picture on it. In the summing up, I think it's quite clear from the atmosphere here in the chamber this morning and comments from round and about Denbysia, nobody wants this cut back in, in the library services. It's absolutely crystal clear by a country mile. We're here because of the financial situation, which again, we've, it's been acknowledged that that's the case. I'd like to put a couple of points right though, because it was mentioned again, the dear old people in the UK government, the funding issues that we've got actually come from the woeful Welsh government funding formula. And if you want an example of that, hang on a minute, am I going to have peace and quiet? And if you want an example of that, you know, they sent back £150 million to the UK Treasury. You know, that's woeful financial management. But I'll put that right. I think my young colleague from the, from the union hinted at that as well. So I wanted to put that in as, as a point in the summary. So it's been a good debate, as I've already said. A lot of points have been covered, most of them all relevant in many, many respects, absolutely. If we go to the paper at 3.1, as a committee here, we need to consider that we've looked at the appendices, et cetera, et cetera. And then at 3.2, I'm going to make the proposal to the Cabinet that, or to send back from this committee, for this committee to agree or otherwise, that this scrutiny committee recommend to the Dembyshire Cabinet that they consider the calling points as recorded that are on the table this morning. Is that good enough? Or do you want me to read them out? More detail? Well, actually, they, they are the calling reports that are in the report. But if you want me to read them out, I'll, I'll read them out, yeah. Yeah.
Hang on, hang on. My daughter's asleep a minute, right? And I got Brian, Brian and Charlotte one, and daughter's asleep waiting. Coverless, Charlotte waiting, okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So I'll start again then, that this, this scrutiny committee recommends to the Dembyshire Cabinet that they consider the calling points as recorded on the sheets of paper that I've got in front of me. And that they remove the libraries in Denbysia totally from this cost-cutting exercise of the 2024/25 budget. So they totally rescind it and it's not included in any budget calculation for this next financial year. So it goes out the window and that includes any redundancies or anything of that nature. And then that they also consider and go through an appraisal of what can be done via the private sector, via grant funding streams, to find the finance to put into the libraries to make up this really small shortfall of 300 plus K that's caused all this issue and why we're here this morning and, and what's upset the public to an unbelievable degree. Thousands of people just don't understand and you can't expect them to understand the overall financial problems of the authority, which I've already said, I accept that, they're there. But to a lot of people, if the library's not open, they don't understand. They hear we had £241 million to spend in this current financial year. And how can you defend it and how can you answer it to people that are not involved with the workings and the inner workings of an authority? Where's all that money gone? Yeah. But anyway, so hopefully you've got my recommendation that I'm putting before this scrutiny committee this morning that we're going to hopefully take a vote on. I'd appreciate, appreciate a recorded vote on it, please, Chair. So we know who's voting which way. And that's my summary.
Okay, we'll just hold that for a second now. We'll go to Emrys now. But there's, there's no more debate on this, no more debate at all. It's not a debate. It's not going back to fight back to each other. No more debate on anybody unless they've got another recommendation. But hold the recommendations. Emrys, you're summing up and that's all we're doing now.
I want to remove one sentence from what I read at the beginning. The first proposal, it mentions reducing that the 40% is inappropriate. 40% is, we don't agree that it's inappropriate. It's a concern, but it isn't inappropriate in the situation we're in at the moment. We welcome the debates today and respect the scrutiny, the scrutiny committee. It's obvious that members aren't happy with the decision and we understand that and agree. The decision was made against the grain, really. It's your choice as a committee to ask the Cabinet to relook at the decision. I believe that the Cabinet are totally aware of the arguments made today in doing this decision, taking this decision. I hope that scrutiny won't be used as a political tool to express dissatisfaction with the decision. But rather, if you decide to ask the Cabinet to relook at it, the decision to do that because you believe that you have new information that wasn't discussed by the Cabinet. That's, that's my comment. Thank you.
Proposal from Brian. Have we got any amendments? Mervyn Parry.
Amendments?
Sorry.
Second or amendments, that was.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's a second.
James, a second. Okay. Mervyn, what did, what did you want?
I appreciate where Brian's coming from, but I think probably if we throw that at the Cabinet, it'll probably get thrown out safely. And I'd like to be a little bit more proactive on that one and maybe take in what Emrys has said. So I'd like to recommend that we recommend to Cabinet that they hold their decision on the cuts on the library for us to have a more of a fuller appraisal on running the library and looking at where we can get options of other external funding to come in to help run these libraries and keep the doors open, as we have discussed. I know that Liz said we can't fund councils, or the, or the grants can't fund councils. But we can think outside the box and call things different names to get fundings in their social businesses or whatever. And I'd like to put a hold on the decision until there's more work done on whether we can get other fundings to help keep the libraries going. You'd shown today how much of an important service it is to the public. That would be my recommendation, Chair.
Can I just, as monitoring officer, please, just say, the council can't be applying for funding for things by calling them different things. That's, that's essentially fraud. So can I, can I just make that point? I'm sure that's not what you meant.
That's not what I meant, Gary.
But I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
You're going off Mervyn's Bible. Can you, please?
So we, we won't fudge the figures. It's, I'd like to put a, I'd like to ask the Cabinet to delay the decision on cutting the, the library costs, the cuts, until they do some more exploratory work on, on other alternative funding that could be used by outside groups that use the library, that they might be able to apply for grants to help run the place. Thank you. Does that make sense? Agencies and whatever, so we can actually keep the doors open of the library with partnership funding. Thank you.
Over to Gary Williams. We've got two proposals so far, and we've got two seconders. Brian, are you going to withdraw yours or, or what do you want to do? Shall we have a vote on Brian's? John, a vote on Brian? Yeah.
Yes, James Elson.
Okay, so you, so you've effectively got a proposal made by Brian, seconded by James. And what you've essentially got is an amendment being proposed by Mervyn, which needs to be seconded. Thank you. So that means now that if the original proposal is not withdrawn, then you need to decide whether or not you approve that the original be amended. And then you have to vote on the amendment, but you can't vote on both if you like. So you, so you need, you, you've, you've got a proposal from Brian and you've got essentially, what's an amendment from Mervyn?
Just let them have a little discussion, mate, what they're doing. Can we just adjourn for, can we just adjourn for, for two minutes? Sorry. Thank you. Adjourn two minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. We have, Chair, we certainly have, yeah. From my proposal, I would like to retain the piece where I asked for that private sector and other grant stream funding avenues are, are investigated and appraised, whatever word you want. If you can add that into councillor Mervyn Parry's amendment, I'll be happy to concede and go to a vote on that.
You've withdrawn yours?
I'll, as long, yeah, and obviously I have a chat.
I'm happy to take them in. Somebody can just read it back so you can fully understand the weather.
I'm not putting words in anybody's mouth. This is what I think is a summary of what you're saying is that the committee would ask Cabinet to postpone its decision on the library savings proposal until further exploratory work had been done to identify alternative funding sources available to the council or other partner bodies, whether in the private or public sector. Is that what you were saying?
And including any redundancies, please. No, all right then. Forget, yeah, forget that.
A second then.
Who's proposing it? Right, okay. In that case, Chair, you've got a proposal. What I do think, just check with three M, but I do think that you need to give some reasons. That may be the, the recommendation, but you would need to identify reasons because you would be going back to Cabinet if this is passed.
Yeah.
And you'd be giving them the reasons why you were asking for that.
So I'm right in saying I will be going and along with the two members who proposed it.
Chair.
Chair. Okay, yeah, so right, give me, give me the reasons. Can you give me some reasons?
Yep, I'll, I'll give the reasons. The reasons I, I'm putting this proposal is that I don't think we've investigated enough with the outside private bodies and with the town and community councils to see if we can give them a chance to see if they want to. It's been suggested, but I don't think it's been made strong enough. And I think that we, if we put a delay on it, we've got a chance to go back to ask outside bodies if we've got some sort of help to try and support the libraries.
Agreement.
Not up to me to be happy. It's your reasons.
I, I've got the reason, I've got the reason that you put in here.
Request for a recorded vote. Do you still want that?
Under the constitution, Chair, for a recorded vote, you need one-sixth of the members present and able to vote to indicate that they'd be happy for a recorded vote, which is, is easy maths for me in scrutiny because that's two. So you need two members to say that they would be happy for a recorded vote. Okay, so then there's a recorded vote.
Gary Williams, thank you.
Okay, so as with recorded votes at council, I'll read out the name of each member of the committee and I'll ask you to indicate whether you are in favour of the proposal, against the proposal, or whether you wish to abstain. So councillor Michelle Blakely-Walker.
In favour of the proposal.
Councillor James Elson.
In favour of the proposal.
Councillor John Harland.
Against.
Councillor Carol Holiday.
Sorry, can you repeat that, Councillor Holiday? Didn't hear you. Was that for?
Or against?
Sorry, was that for or against, Councillor Holiday? You're on mute.
In favour.
Councillor Harland.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Councillor Karen Edwards.
In favour.
Councillor Brian Jones.
In favour.
Councillor Adwell Roberts.
Oblied.
In favour.
Oblied.
In favour.
Councillor Cheryl Williams, can you hear us?
I didn't now, it was complete silence then, but yeah, I'm for it.
Did you say four then?
Councillor Hugh Williams.
I'm abstaining.
So Chair, the result of that vote is there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Eight members voted in favour of the proposal, two against and one abstention. So the proposal is carried.
Great, thank you. It's been a great debate, a long debate, a worthy debate. And I'd just like to thank Emerys Gwyneth and I will see you in Cabinet. Definitely only palp. Meeting closed. Thank you.